Joint meeting of the Temple City Unified School District Board of Education and the ASB Associated Student Body Leadership. And with that, I'm going to do a quick roll call. We have to, since we're meeting as a board, we have to do a formal meeting. So Member Espinoza?
Here.
Member Georgino?
Here.
Member Lynn?
Here.
Member Sneed?
Here.
And I'm here as well. So with that, we're on to the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led today by Tina, and I'm sorry, I don't know if it's Lee or Li.
Um, it's Tiana Lee, yeah.
Okay, Tiana, you're going to lead us in the pledge.
Okay, thank you. Um, if you guys will please stand with me while we say the Pledge of Allegiance, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And the reason for which it stands, one nation, under liberty and justice.
Very good, thank you, Tiana. And then we are on to item number four, which is an introduction of the board and administrators and ASB leadership. And Nicole, you're down to lead this.
Hi, everyone. So today we have our board president, Mr. Smith. We have Member Espinoza, Member Georgino, Member Lynn, Member Sneed, and along with Ms. Penn, Dr. Fricker, Ms. Soral, as well as Ms. Getty and Mr. Harper.
Thank you. And the next item on our agenda is public comment. This is something we have to do at all of our meetings, and I'm going to guess, Marie, there's no public comments today. So we're moving right on into the discussion portion of our agenda. The first item is opening comments, and that will be led by Mr. Kidd.
All right, thank you, everyone, and we're glad to have you guys. We were, we were, you know, working on their presentation, and I was explaining to Nicole, like, you know, you'll need to introduce everyone, you know, at the table. And then it just dawned on me, she's never actually sat at the table with everyone before, and my head exploded. So it just goes to show how long we've been doing this, but it, say, you know, ASB is going to try to report back to you on, on the current state of affairs at Temple City High School. And, and all of the positive things that we are accomplishing. So I would like to introduce Tiana, Tiana Lee and Joseph Hinckley, who are our ASB President and Vice President, who will lead us through our presentation and introduce everyone along the way.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joseph Hinckley, as Mr. Kidd said, I'm this year's ASB Vice President, and I'd just like to say thank you to the board for having us tonight and letting us present all the things that we've been doing during distance learning. And hopefully, we can give you guys a little silver lining for all the events that we're putting on this year. Next slide. So as I said, I'm Joseph, and Tiana is our president this year, and as you can see, we like to have fun, we like to have our spirit, even through this online learning. We like to show that we still have our school spirit, even though we can't show it in person as we would normally. Next slide. And this is our lovely ASB leadership. Every single one of these members was either elected or chosen by me and Tiana to represent the student body, and you'll get a chance to meet each and every single one of them later on during this presentation. So this is a little infographic that our wonderful PR team made for us after 100 days since our first formal meeting. This is all the things that we've done that we thought were significant to us. We've done a bunch of different little events that a bunch of different committees will go into more detail about when they introduce themselves. And if you like to look, there are some numbers, like 590 active five-star participants, which you'll find out what that is as soon as the Renaissance Committee gives their presentation. And we've done a lot of different things, and some things that we are working on are, we're still planning on having our homecoming and our Spring Spirit Week, even though it will be online. And our Activities and Assemblies Committee will tell you more about that when it gets to them.
Uh, thank you, Joseph, this is Tiana now, and part of our job as ASB leaders is to really reach out to the students and present their perspectives. So I wanted to show you this summary of what, um, of the impact on distant learning on students. And on the left, we have pluses, and then on the right, we have deltas, meaning things that we're hoping to change in the future to make the experience even better for students. The biggest plus by far has been the teachers, so many of them have been so kind and compassionate to us, they've been able to recognize the circumstances and really adapt. So we're really grateful for the district and for admin for really advocating for that collaborative teacher-student relationship. Fridays, they were already great before in-person, but having them be asynchronous has been really helpful for a lot of students because it kind of acts as a buffer for them to catch up on work from the week, and it's a great opportunity to kind of schedule office hours with teachers, or it's just very, we really like Fridays. As for Canvas, I know there was a bit of a learning curve for teachers, it was something new for this year, but it was really intuitive for students. A lot of them enjoyed how it kind of aided them in time management because you had all of your subjects centralized onto one page. So students really liked Canvas. Um, I think that the most glaring thing that students had trouble with was kind of getting the attention that they would have in-person. It's kind of not a thing where you could just pop into a teacher's classroom and like have a word with them. So we've been collaborating with admin to try and find solutions to make teachers more accessible to students so that they can get the help that they need. Some things that admin has already done to kind of improve this is that they mandate a 23-hour response window for emails, which is kind of crazy. I don't know if I'd be able to do that. And also, we're working on doing set office hours so that you can pop in like how you would have in-person in a classroom. Next slide, please. And this is what me and Joseph have been working on, something that I really wanted to highlight is how we're working on having more of an online presence than we did last year. And doing this and doing kind of smaller events than rather these big, large, intimidating events, we've actually been able to reach different corners of the student body that we normally wouldn't be able to talk to. You know, like, your kids are a bit shyer and maybe not into huge, large crowds, like crowding to watch the homecoming fireworks, students that like video game. And also, we've been able to reach out to neighboring schools really easily, since we don't really need to bus anywhere to talk to them. We've been able to contact three neighboring schools so far, Alhambra, Gaberlino, and Rose Need to do an exchange, which is kind of like a convention, and we hope to do another exchange in spring semester with Arcadia High School in San Marino. And we're also doing a current spirit week with San Marino High School, is sort of a faux homecoming to try and make up for some of the spirit that we lost last semester. And our Assemblies Committee will tell you a bit more about that.
So if you guys didn't know, there are, our ASB is broken up into different committees, and each committees have different roles in our in our ASB, sorry. So first, we have activities, which is responsible for organizing and planning all major ASB activities. We have assemblies that plans and executes assembly, spirit weeks, and other activities. We have campus that regulates clubs, community outreach, and hosts fundraisers. We have the executives composed of the secretary, treasurer, and elected student officials. We have public relations that promotes major ASB activities and manages our social medias. And finally, we have Renaissance that recognizes the student body, regulate and regulates the five-star program. So next up, we have our Activities Committee that, that is made up of Alice, Tiffany, Samantha, and Alyssa.
Hello, I am Tiffany Tao, and I'm an Activities Commissioner this year. And basically, for Activities Committee, what we would usually do in a normal school setting is plan all the dances and any of the activities that coincide with it. But this year, we kind of have to adjust our game plan, so our main goal had, was being, was trying to connect and encourage student interactions and kind of emulate that same environment a dance would have. So some of our events that we've had so far was a game night and a game pigeon tournament. Our game pigeon tournament was a week-long affair with four representatives from each grade competing against each other and with different people from other grades as well, until we were able to announce a winner. Each day, we had a video of the games that they played, which were all online, but also a student commentary as well to go along with it. Now, Fright Fest was a Friday afternoon when we had a bunch of games hosted by ASB members that were open for any student at TCHS to join and play with each other and even interact with some of their ASB officers. And right now, we are in the middle of homecoming nominations, because this year, even though we don't have a game or a dance, we still decided that we want to go forward with a homecoming court. And right now, we're in the middle of nominations, and we're also working on the court recognition and awards. And the last week of February is when we plan on having a week-long of activities.
Next slide.
And some, these are some of the infographics for our event so far, so you can see we have our Fright Fest, we have our Game Pigeon winner, and even some Game Pigeon Tournament infographics, also as well as the homecoming nominations one right now. And next up, I want to introduce Assemblies Committee, which consists of Justin, Melanie, Lila, Felicia, Rocco, and Diana.
Hi, I'm Felicia, I'm a member of Assemblies. So this year, our goals with online learning has been mainly trying to encourage school spirit, even online. And at school, we would be in charge of spirit weeks, so we've been doing virtual spirit weeks mainly through Instagram. Those students without an Instagram can participate through their email as well. So what we've done so far, we've done three spirit weeks. So first up was our Fall Spirit Week, which was Billboard 626, which was basically like top charts music themed. And on our Instagram, we did an album cover tournament where students recreated their favorite album covers, and they did a little competition through students voting through story polls. And then for Halloween, our Halloween Spirit Week, we did Netflix Thrills, which was obviously Netflix-themed. We did a spirit video for that, and our Friday Fright Night, which was on Discord, which is a little gaming night that Activities mentioned earlier. And for our December Spirit Week, we did it Charlie Brown-themed, we also had a spirit video for that one. And currently, right now, we're doing a little collaboration with San Marino, and it's game show themed. And in the future to do, we have Mr. TC, we have Discord events, and Spring Rally. Next slide, please. And here are a few infographics from those spirit weeks that I mentioned before. On our left, we can see the Billboard Top 66 and the different days we have for that. Our top right, there is a Charlie Brown Holiday, which was our December Spirit Week, and this is a video, we're going to play like maybe 30 seconds of our Halloween Spirit Week. So yeah, that was like a little glimpse of our Spirit Week, and up next, next slide, please. Up next is campus with Isabel, Janelle, Noah, and Thomas.
So campus this year has been working to adapt to an online format, especially since clubs are so closely connected to being on campus. What we ended up doing was creating a Discord server, because that was the closest place we could get to an actual physical meeting up. And we now have a server for the entire school, where we have many clubs on there, more than 2,000 people, including administrators. And that's where we held our virtual Club Rush, where we had many people going in and out to check different clubs out. And that was a big success for us because it showed how it was actually still possible to have good, fun club times and actual connections online.
So here are some of the here are some of the infographics that we used over the years. On the left is our club chartering infographic meeting, infographic for our informational meeting. In the middle is our list of charter clubs, which we actually chartered over 90 this year. And on the right is one of the infographics for our Discord Club Rush. And then, um, next we have the Populations Committee, Rena Wan, Rachel Shang, Kathy Yee, Aditi, Shriwastav, and Annabelle Liao.
So, hi, I'm Aditi, and some things PR is constantly working on is updating all the social medias, which includes Instagram and Facebook, staying in contact with admin for graphic requests, and creating infographics specific to TC's unique style. With the Collaborative Spirit Week with San Marino, PR is working on a total of 16 infographics, including the main graphic, five-story graphics, and the daily spirit calendar, which never fails to incite some friendly competition. Along with that, we are working on homecoming infographics, which include how to vote, the nominated court, thumbnails, and of course, the King's sleep.
So so far, we've made a total of 179 graphics in all. Usually, there are 16 graphics per Spirit Week, and some of the Spirit Weeks we've already done are a Charlie Brown Christmas, Netflix and Thrills, Billboard Top 66, and Kindness Week. We also always, we're always making class graphics for, for Class Council and fundraiser events. Next slide. Um, here are some examples of the graphics we made. Next slide. And next is Renaissance slash five-star committee, which consists of Amelia, Caitlin, Rem, Dylan, Fan, and Elizabeth.
Hi, I'm Dylan, and each year, the Renaissance Committee hosts a Renaissance Recognition Assembly, in which we congratulate and recognize the graduating class. And similar to last year's Renaissance Assembly, we are planning to have this celebration virtual and from the safety of our own homes. In replacement of the CIF Coronation and Senior Nights, we are also planning on distributing personalized posters through contact, contactless delivery, if guidelines will allow us. If we're unable to do this safely and in a timely manner, we plan on creating electronic posters in the form of infographics that athletes can post on their own social media. And last on our to-do list is our second semester Five-Star Redemption Week. And we actually just finished, uh, our first semester Redemption Week this past week, and are currently distributing prizes. But Redemption Week is a week in which students were able to redeem prizes with the points that they earned during the first semester. And to encourage students' participation and friendly competition, we began posting a monthly five-star leaderboard, where we recognized the top three five-star users in each grade on our Instagram Rams of Run. On top of this, we encourage students to attend club meetings by awarding five-star points each week. And on the recognition side, we are continually, continuing, continually working on recognizing TCHS student body through recognition, such as Rem of the Month, Group of the Month, and Ram Recognition. Uh, as I just mentioned, we recognize three different individuals or groups each month. Therefore, we have already completed recognition for the month of September through January. And we also began the school year with ways to advertise and promote school spirit using five-star with the introduction of two raffles, such as the Cool House Raffle Ticket and the Starbucks Bundle Raffle. Lastly, we worked on to build a better relationship with both the student body as well as the staff using a Google Form, allowing for Rem of the Month nomination and five-star awards for their exemplary behavior inside and outside of the Zoom classrooms. In addition to recognizing the student body, we also manage an app called Five Star, which allows, which is a program that allows us to track student involvement through check-ins, where students can earn points for participating in certain activities. These points can then be used to redeem prizes at the end of each semester during Redemption Week. And Five Star also breaks down student metrics that we can use to further improve future school events. And next slide. And next is the Execs Committee, which consists of Kristin, Celine, Kylie, Nicole, Lauren, Kiana, and Annabelle.
Hi, so my name is Kristin, I'm currently the senior class president for this year. Um, I work alongside Lila, who's our senior class vice president. So we've got a bunch of monthly activities for the rest of the year. We're starting with a Day in the Life of the Senior Vlog, Guest to Horoscope Teacher Edition, and Traveling in Senior Swag. In addition to these activities, we will also be releasing monthly Spotify playlists to kind of keep our students in at their last year at TCHS. And still plan on having two to three fundraisers to raise money that will go towards Senior Sunset graduation, which I'll let Lila talk more about.
Hi, I'm Lila, I'm the senior vice president, and we just basically wanted to include more information about Senior Sunset and graduation because we still wanted to incorporate some of the last, more memorable aspects of becoming, of being a senior. So for Senior Sunset, Kristin and I really wanted to include more of the traditional activities that have been done within the previous years. However, since we, since we are in a pandemic, we did want to modify that so that everything is safely done. And if possible, we would like to include a drive-in movie, but we would still understand the safety guidelines, and we would still follow that. So we just wanted to leave that as an option, and we also including, wanted to include more of the traditional things, such as having the VV's VP speeches, Brighter Side Singer, and Teacher Thank You. And we're still thinking of more activities that'll be safe to do for Senior Sunset, but that is just some of the activities that we have so far. And as for graduation, we've been mostly having senior class council meetings, and we have roughly about 20 seniors who attended our last one, where we mainly talked about, about graduation and what we kind of wanted. So we basically asked, um, if possible, that if we could have a graduation as close to a traditional one, but still following safety guidelines, of course. And we're still thinking of more alternatives and possibilities that we could have, that we can bring up to the board eventually.
Could we go back one slide, please? Thank you. Um, so we just had a Blaze fundraiser last week, and we're currently going through our February activity. It's called Cupid's Photo Booth, it's kind of just like you Photoshop yourself with your celebrity crush, and we kind of vote on who has the photo, just to keep everything kind of fun and upbeat. And to keep up with the Valentine's Day theme, we released a February playlist, and it's filled with lovey-dovey songs, so everybody can feel happy and loved this month. And we have a class council meeting planned for the end of this month, we've been having them monthly since the start of the year. And then as for last semester, our most successful event was something called Ramsey's Kitchen. It was structured kind of like the TV show Chopped, where we had eight chefs go three rounds of elimination, and people in the senior class got to vote on who they wanted to see move on based on their creation. And with that event, we were able to get 1,800 views, 1,300 votes, and over 100 shares. And we're really working on getting more engaging events like this in the future. And now I'm going to pass it on to our lovely junior class officers, Celine and Felicia.
Hi, everyone, my name is Celine, and I'm this year's junior class president, and I work alongside Felicia, who is our junior class vice president, as she presented earlier for Assemblies. And so, starting off with some of the events that we've done, we started off the school year with a 2022 trivia, where we tested our juniors on basic school facts. And for the winner, we awarded them with five-star points, so again, including five-star into our activities. And we also awarded them with a gift basket delivered to their house, social distance, and that gift basket was filled with school supplies. We also had a fabulous Halloween makeup contest, where we had students send in their Halloween makeup looks. And it was a competition on our Instagram stories, and so we just had people vote on their favorite makeup looks. We also have monthly class councils, just like the seniors, we want to get insight into what our juniors want to see. We also had a gingerbread house decorating competition with me and Felicia. So we made a little video and put together the best moments during our decorating. So hopefully, we entertain our class with that. We also had a Chipotle fundraiser just last month, and we also, for Christmas, had a 25 Days of Christmas event. So for this event, we basically had events every single day, starting from December 1st. So this ranged from polls to decorating cookies on our stories, to voting for your favorite Christmas songs or movies. So this was actually very successful, we had about 300 views every single day. So for 25 days, that's about 7,500 views in total. All right, now, moving on to the things that we're doing currently. So we're working on our Valentine's Day grams, where students can send grams to anyone they want. We're also working on our Chick-fil-A fundraiser, which we will have this month and upcoming class council meetings. Some of the things that we want to do for the future are to make more videos in order to gain attention, because we noticed that videos are very popular amongst the students, have more give backs, and do fundraisers. So some popular fundraisers are Foba, Chipotle, Chick-fil-A, and Blaze Pizza. So overall, we're still trying different ideas in order to gain more attention, and again, I want to say thank you to the board for listening today. Next slide. So now I'm going to pass it on to our amazing sophomore class officers, Lauren and Samantha.
Hi, board members, thank you so much for meeting with ASB. On the screen, the phone will be playing a video as I speak. All the little app icons are infographics that the wonderful PR team put together, so big thank you to them for helping us out. My name is Lauren Chee, I'm the sophomore class president, and Samantha Lee is our sophomore class vice president, Ella, her say hello.
Hi, everyone.
I like to say that we're the best team, but our whole ASB is actually the best team, and we're just the dynamic duo. We want to quickly introduce Kiana, Melanie, Diana, and Noah, who are the other sophomores in ASB. They helped Samantha and I a lot by representing our class in a positive manner. Next, I want to talk about our class council. We have been able to build a really strong bond with our class council despite the online circumstances. They're constantly reposting our Instagram content without us having to ask, which makes spreading the word to our peers a lot easier. So Samantha and I are super grateful to be able to have the connection with them. We have a class council cabinet that we go to for advice, and they're, they're always super responsive and provide great amounts of feedback that helps Samantha and I decipher what we want to do within our class. Our class spirit is also extremely high, as we beat the seniors our last spirit week. We're extremely proud of our class for showing their positive spirits, even though we haven't been in school all year. Since September, we've held week-long monthly activities. The video playing will be showing all the activities that we've done so far, but I want to particularly speak on our January activities, so I'll let the video play as I speak. If you're familiar with the Fox Show, The Masked Singer, we did a rendition of that show, and this is how we did it. We had a total of 14 singers, and if you have an iPhone, there's this thing called Memoji, which is a live animated emoji. So the participants would send us the audio recording of them singing, and it was just the audio, so they were able to submit it raw or with a voice, robot voice filter. Since not everyone is comfortable with their singing, we allowed that because we wanted to make them feel as comfortable as possible. We know it didn't sound fair, but it provided that sense of confidence for some of our peers, so we weren't concerned. Since they only submitted the audio recording, Samantha and I were the only ones who knew who was who. We would then sync it with the Memoji character, then upload it onto our Instagram story. We used a bracket to determine who would face who, and by the end of the week, we had our final winner who was revealed. We find this activity did fairly well, because it was open to those who typically don't participate in our monthly activities. With our identity being anonymous, a lot of people felt comfortable with singing without having to worry about being judged by others. This event received an average of 300 views per day with a total of 1,500 views at the end of the week. We got a lot of good feedback from our peers and other school ASB members, saying that they were impressed by our activity and wanted to do it themselves. I'm going to let it load for a second, but if Nicole could unmute so we could all hear the audio, I'll show a quick clip of our top two contestants singing the round three song. So we made this introduction for them to kind of, you know, build suspense for our viewers. I'm not sure if you're able to hear it, but
No.
Wait, Nicole, is your audio on?
I'm not sure how to do the audio.
It's okay, let's just pretend they're singing.
I apologize.
Samantha, do you want to sing it with me? We can sing it together. But yeah, there
Too much compromising.
Yeah, um, we have a lot of great singers in our class, and we're really proud of them for, you know, coming out of their comfort zone to participate in this activity. We love being our classroom representatives, and we hope to be able to continue our work, and if you have any questions or ways we can improve, please let me know, as your advice would be greatly appreciated. You can follow us on TCHS Rams 2020 through our Instagram to see some of the activities that we've done in more detail, and you could actually hear the audio of the Masked Singer event. But yeah, thank you so much for your time. I would like to pass it on to the freshmen, they're doing an amazing job despite not being in school on campus this year. So Annabelle and Isabel are our freshman class representatives.
Thank you so much, Lauren, okay. Like, first of all, can you hear me? Okay, okay. Hi, I'm Annabelle, the freshman class president, and my vice president is Isabel, who's also in the campus committee. That's a picture of us that was taken last year before COVID. And then our theme for this year is funky freshmen, so we wanted to center it around like a hip 70s, kind of 80s vibe. All right, so although this year's been challenging in terms of planning events, especially since we haven't been on campus, we've made sure to create engaging events that are available to people across all platforms, not just social media. So here on this ladder, just some of the infographics for the events that we've had so far. And then there's also a picture of our class council for the Halloween Spirit Week in their, in their Halloween costumes. So as for the events that we've had so far, we've held consistent class council meetings from the month of October to January with around, oh, could you go to the next slide, please? With around 20 With around twenty members, try to consistent students coming and participating. Um and at class council meetings, we do bonding activities and more most importantly, hear back from our class about what they think of certain topics so far and if they have any just like ideas or things that we want it, they think that we should implement for the future. Uh we've also had an online school themed Ram Lives based off the famous game Mad Libs where people fill in the blanks of a story with random adjectives and nouns. And then for a holiday themed event, we had a Clash of the Christmas Sweaters competition where people designed their own Christmas sweaters and voted on the best one or the one that they thought was the funniest. And then we had a fundraiser uh at Panda Express where we had a total of three hundred dollars in total sales and got twenty percent of that profit. And then we recently just had our winter snack basket giveaway to increase student activity and also just to of the use of a five star. We have about eighty-five um active members on five star who continue to check in and just get all their spirit points. Um and then for bi-monthly videos, we have fun videos released twice a month, such as study tips, crafts or any other things that are um classes interested in and those are done by our amazing tech editors. And and then some of the things we are currently working on are a Valentine's escape room on Google Forms, um February class council, as well as trivia for Black History Month to celebrate Black History Month. Um and then some things that we plan to do in the future are a Discord game night where we can play activities with our class and just bond. And then to hold another fundraiser at maybe a robo shop to increase class funds. And then possibly another escape room for April Fools and a Sunday snack basket giveaway to match the one that we had in winter. Overall, it's been pretty challenging just since that a lot of the freshmen have not been on campus or been to school on campus, but we've really worked to connect with our class and just up a spirit and connect even over this online school setting. And then I'm gonna pass it on to our amazing treasurer and secretary, Kiana and Kylie.
Thank you very much, Annabelle. So hello, I am Kylie Bell. I am the secretary here at ASB. Um during this virtual setting, we've learned that it is very important to stay organized. Um so I work alongside my treasurer, Kiana, and the ASB bookkeepers in the office um to help document and keep everything organized. I'm responsible for filling out the meeting minutes where I get to document all of the great events and plans that my fellow ASB members have come up with. Um when we are on campus, I also partake in creating our monthly newsletter in our school bathrooms, the toilet times, just something to read when you're down in the dumps. Um right now, we are around forty, we had our forty-eighth meeting uh earlier this week. So uh and here's an example of our meeting minutes. Now I would like to turn it over to our lovely treasurer, Ms. Kiana.
Thank you, Kylie. Um my name is Kiana and I'm your ASB treasurer this year. Uh to start basically most weekly, uh we during our bi-weekly meetings, Kylie and I approve the expenditure, check and transfer requests that are sent in from our staff members and clubs. Um we also organize a monthly treasures report, which uh documents our income and expenses from our activities and athletics accounts. Our main source of income is our ASB cards, which are fifty dollar yearly income donations that typically include various discounts for students. And this year we sold about two hundred ASB cards. And that gave us a total revenue from ASB cards to be about ten thousand dollars. Um this revenue funds school activities such as pep rallies and athletic expenses such as CIF and sport entry fees. However, this is significant, this revenue is significantly less than years prior as we raised about twenty percent of our average annual revenue. But because of our minimal expenses due to our online setting, we have maintained a positive balance. And I just wanted to thank you all for listening tonight and thank you um for listening to our presentation. And I'd like to pass it back to our president, Tiana.
Uh like Kiana said, thank you so much for listening. I know it must have been a lot to take in, but we but we've loved meeting you and we especially love your coordinating Zoom backgrounds. Um if there are any questions or comments, we'd be happy to address them now.
We we kind of jumped over item seven, which was the impact of uh distance learning, didn't we? Or I mean, it was quick we did. Is is there anything? Sorry?
Would you like us to go back to the slide?
I mean, it was I I thought there was gonna, I guess I was looking for more information, maybe, you know, than what was really shared. I it's certainly, you know, having an impact on everybody. And I I guess I I'm curious to know kind of at a personal level how it's working for you all.
Hmm um I can definitely answer personally. I think that um in general, it's just a stressful time. But um given the resources that we've had, I think that TCHS students actually have it pretty good in terms of the stuff that's available to us. I think that Canvas is working out pretty well and our counselors have definitely come in clutch and being available to us. Is there anything else I could elaborate more on?
No, that's it. I just I I got I that's fine. Thank you.
I I'd like to know how um how is the day split up for most of you with your distance learning? How many hours a day are you actually interacting with your with your instructors?
Um so now we're on block schedule, right? So typically, I think the day is about cut maybe to three hours. So we end at twelve fifty. Um I guess instruction would be fifty minutes per teacher and that's roughly. Um I have a schedule zero to seven, which is, I think, maybe most students have around six classes. So that's maybe you're meeting like three teachers a day.
So you're meeting with like half your teachers two days a week and the other half, the other two days, is that correct?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. And then Friday is the
asynchronous day.
Asynchronous day, okay.
I have a question.
Please, Donna.
What this is, this might be a dumb question, but what is Discord?
Thank you. I was thinking, asking, wondering the same.
I can answer that. Discord is uh it's not exactly a social media app. It's more like sort of like a Zoom meeting where you can go in and out of different call channels. But then attached to those call channels are also text channels where you can talk to people over text in a certain place without having to be on call. So the the reason it's special for us to use is because it does combine those two elements in a way that makes it feel a bit more like an actual place.
I was kinda saying it's kind of like a multi-room Zoom call that that, you know, you can go from room to room to room and 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 there's bulletin boards within each room and resources posted in each room so that the clubs are making it kind of their own little land.
Overwhelming. It's it's overwhelming. I don't know how kids do it. Adults cannot do it like. I'm not gonna lie, like I've tried. It's like it's overwhelming. So some our kids are way brighter than we are.
Well, we treated a longer attention span for the ability to look at a million things at once, so.
There you go, yes.
It wasn't for free.
I have a follow-up question to um uh board member Georgino's question about Discord. Now, Noah, you mentioned earlier, I might have heard this mistaken uh this part, but you said something about setting up a server for Discord. Is that something students did on their own? Do you compile the software or do you download it, install it on a server?
Um when we set up the server, that did take quite a few hours for our campus committee. Our um our technical expert, Thomas, helped us set up a an actual bot that can moderate the server. Because when you have that many people, you can't do it yourself. And so we worked together to set up a bot on the server that we made so that um good behavior is basically impossible to get around. It's made so that if you say anything inappropriate, you can be instantly banned from the server and just not a problem anymore. It's pretty great.
Okay, I could I could I understand why President Smith is laughing there too, because I am just blown away by this. It's not just setting up the Discord server, but you have a bot which sounds like it's AI. Um this is phenomenal. Thank you for sharing that.
Of course. It's not AI. It's just responding to a certain set of commands that we've given it, but we're happy that it's impressive to you guys.
Very good.
So ASB, I I wanted to ask this question of you guys and whoever wants to chime in. I just I just wanna hear as many voices as I can, as we have time for um on this one. Um what you've guys have done an incredible job um being creative and, you know, trying to engage people. But I wanna know, you know, just from your perspective, what's what has been the biggest challenge um in your leadership roles in trying to deal with this distance learning, you know, situation?
Lack of motivation from both the students and us, I think. Um especially I'm a lot in the senior class because now this is like our last year and everything has gone how it has. And there's really nobody really to put in effort anymore because we are we're already like, oh, we know how this is gonna play out. So I think keeping our students motivated and keeping ourselves motivated is a huge thing that we're trying to work on this year.
I hear that because I have a senior at home too and I know exactly that that feeling that she's articulated to me as well. So thank you for that. Anybody else? How about the freshmen? Because, you know, you were looking forward to being on campus and um and and that has not happened. And so it's kind of still like, how is it to be in high school? So I, how about the freshmen?
I was definitely, I'm sorry.
Um as um freshman representatives, I think one of the main obstacles is getting people to participate in activities, especially since they've never been in campus. They don't know, oh, should I do this? Is it worth it? Do I need to do this? So really getting the incentive for them and raising that spirit for the freshman class, even online, is something that we're trying to constantly improve on and build upon.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Going go along with what Isabel said, as being someone part of like PR and our job is advertising. For the first couple of months of the years, it was impossible to get engagement by some of the kids. They were reluctant to, they were still missing, you know, online school. Um they didn't like online school. They were missing in-person school and they didn't want to do it. And I think over over the years, we're coming into second semester, most kids have gotten used to it and they're more accepting of it. So I think we're seeing a lot more engagement in all the classes. So I think we're getting pretty good now.
That's great.
I know we heard at our last meeting from Oak that a lot of the students are feeling um very isolated. So they've uh the counselors at Oak have instituted a lot of programs to keep the students interactive. It sounds like you have all done such a wonderful job of having so many activities to bring the students together. Are you hearing from other students though that they're still feeling that isolation that your junior high that our junior high students are feeling also? Because I imagine at the at the high school level, a lot of students might be on their own during the day because parents might be working and outside of the home again. Are you hearing that from your classmates that there is a concern about the isolation that our junior high students are feeling?
Um what I know I've heard from my peers and also from myself, when I talk to myself because I'm isolated, is that is that um regardless of the events that we have, and yes, they are fun and they do a good job connecting students, we have to just remember that being online isn't a permanent state. It has to only be a patch because we're all feeling this is not how it's supposed to be. And yes, in in short, yes, we are feeling the isolation.
I wanted to ask one more question if we have time. Do we have time?
Yeah.
So if anyone has any thoughts, is there anything that you would like to see from the board um that you're not seeing um that that would help you through this time? And if you don't have a an idea at the moment and you wanna email us later or whatever, please feel free to do that. But I just wanna put that thought out there because, you know, we only know what we hear from our constituents, from you all. Um and and but if we don't hear anything, then we we don't, you know, we don't know. So please feel free to, if there is something that you believe that the board could help with in this situation, please reach out. And if you have any thoughts now, please feel free.
Melissa, if we let them think about it for a bit and Mike could share your um email with them. And so I'm sure you'll get a number of emails about ideas about what they could do or what you could do to help them.
Yeah, no, that sounds great.
Yeah, good idea.
I think the board has done a really great job of getting us to this point. And I think that's um, you know, I think the I I think the students realize that and appreciate that a lot.
Well, great. That's good.
I wanna thank all all of you for um being such great student leaders um at all levels. You are going above and beyond. I I was just, I'm totally impressed by the presentation you just gave us. It was blew me blew my mind. But I always knew we had great students in Temple City and we certainly have great student leadership. Uh you are, you are the leaders of the future and you're, I think we're in really good hands with the all of you. You're doing a bang-up job here, all of you and to uh those members of your um of all your committees and all the members of uh ASB, I really want to thank all of you for for all the work you're doing to keep the students engaged and keep the, you know, keep their spirits up during uh which, you know, these aren't easy times and you're making it much easier on them. So thank you all very much.
Yeah, we're gonna echo those sentiments. Um board members need is Mrs. Need. I I'm just like me, I guess you're scanning the the faces to see who was that Longden? I I'm scanning who was a former La Rosca Rascal. I could see Kylie Bell. I see Joseph. Um you've changed so much. I can only remember you by name, you know, some of you by name, but um we're so proud of you, so proud of you. This is a very challenging uh many months. Um and you are leaders. You're gonna be inheriting this world. Um we're so proud of you. Uh the question that uh board member Espinoza asked, what can you expect from us? We can say, look, you are contributing so much, right? You are givers, not askers. You're not asking for more. You're you're providing solutions to the world. And what Noah said earlier about setting up the server, I'm still very impressed. You're innovators. You're gonna solve a lot of problems. And with that, I'm so proud of you. Thank you.
Donna, you I work, we kind of wrapped into the very little bit where we're making board comments. Donna, do you wanna say something?
Yes, I do. Well, first of all, it's great to see all of you. I I really miss seeing students. And so I'm I'm very happy to be able to see all your smiling faces. Um and I wanna thank you for your leadership in keeping the students engaged in school. It's really important right now. And um so I appreciate all your efforts. And I did wanna mention that I am always open to supporting fundraisers, especially dine-outs, because I don't like to cook. So anytime you wanna send me information about your dine-outs, I'd be happy to support you. Um Mr. Kidd can give you my email address. Actually, you should probably just send it to all of us and hopefully some of the others can show up too. But again, thank you for all your hard work. I really appreciate it.
And I'll close out on behalf of the board. I echo everyone's comments. I very much enjoyed these meetings. We have them typically once a year. I've I've been uh involved in the board a little longer and had a chance to see different groups every year, but it's always fun. It's always great to see what innovation you guys can come up with and what little problems you can throw our way that we try to figure out how to solve. Um and I appreciate the format, the the format you have for all your presentations, the doing, do and done is a good way to categorize things and helps provide a good indication of what's going on. So thank you all very much for that. I don't know if um Tiana, anybody wants to make any closing remarks on behalf of ASB?
Um yeah, I think that we will definitely reach out um to you guys with things that we noticed that we think can improve. I'm sure Mr. Kidd will give us.
things that we noticed that we think can improve. I'm sure Mr. Kidd will give us Miss Espinoza's email. But thank you guys so much for meeting with us. Thank you for being so nice to us. Um, we don't really get much recognition from the student bodies sometimes. So it's, so it's really nice to hear that. You think that we're doing good work and that you like our Discord.
You're doing great work. Not good.
Excellent work. You guys are awesome. Thank you.
They are very.
Problem solvers. If you can do this, pat yourselves on the back for a job well done. You deserve that.
You're, you're ready. So anyway, with that, I, I guess I'll go ahead and call for a, a motion in a second to adjourn and then we'll take a quick vote.
I'd like to move the motion to adjourn.
A second.
So we have a motion from member Len and a second from member Snead. Um, member Espinoza?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
Member Len?
Yes.
Member Snead?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So we are adjourned. Thank you all.